Many can come out to sponsor the senior class for that event. And finally, that the senior prom is coming up on May 1st, which will be held at Danesport Yacht Club. So, just a few things going on in the school this month.
Excellent, very social, yes.
I would just like to compliment the junior class in their dates. My husband and I had the privilege of attending the junior prom, and we have chaperoned over flotty dances between Winchester and Lexington and Wilmington, and I have to say that the student behavior at Wilmington was outstanding. Everyone at the country club commented on how well behaved and polite the students were, so you have a lot to be proud of.
Great, excellent, thank you. Any comments? Great, thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, under the superintendent's report, Mrs. Benton.
I have actually eight items. The first two are presentations. The first presentation last week, at the last school committee meeting, you had voted approval, acceptance of a grant from the Donald E. Grant Foundation, and this evening we have invited Brian McCobrey and Scott Grant and Tom Strawn, who is the business teacher, and Dev Deegan, if you'd come up also assistant principal of the business department, to accept the grant. And the school committee has not met Thomas before. He's new this year, but he's certainly brought a lot to the business department, and maybe you could just tell us what you wanted to use these funds for.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you very much on behalf of Wilmington High School and the business department. Our target with these monies and this grant is in the area of accounting, and I can assure you we're going to put that to great use. We've got 21 students right now. I should point out an interesting mix, too, freshmen up through seniors, who are very excited and are doing a great job and looking forward to another great year and offering it. So that's where we're targeting us, we're going to put target for accounting to continue to build the program and give them the best opportunity we can.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, student members, Superintendent Ben, thank you. My name is Brian McCobrey. I'm with the Savings Bank. We're headquartered in Wakefield. I'm joined by Scott Grant, who's a Wilmington resident, local attorney, and a member of our Board of Incorporators. And just by way of background, two years ago, Scott and I were here under the guise of the Grant Foundation, which was named for his father, which the bank endowed to support financial literacy. And at the time that presentation, that gift was for about $5,800, I believe. This year, to Mr. Strawn's credit, he applied to the Grant Foundation again for a larger award than we're presenting tonight, and due to funding issues, I'm sure you're not aware of funding issues, but, due to funding issues, the foundation wasn't able to support the request in its entirety. And so, the bank got involved in that, and we decided that because of the cause in financial literacy, and especially in these times where financial literacy is so important, that the bank would fund the request. So we're here tonight to present you with a check for $2,850 for Mr. Strawn's benefit, which will basically buy a software license for accounting and the instructing materials to handle that information.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Nice to meet you as well.
Thank you, you're welcome. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you again.
Thank you.
We have a very special guest here this evening. In order of introduction, I'd like to give a little background. The League of Women Vote is, every year, has a contest entitled Democracy and Change, and they invite students in grades four through 12th to participate in an online essay contest. And the middle school has been very involved in this online essay contest for many years, and we had students from grade six through eight who had applied. There were over 1,200 entries, and I'm pleased to say that we had a second-place winner. And in addition to that, we had many honorable member, mentioned students who were also on it at a reception that was held on Sunday at Faneuil Hall, with the guest speaker was Dr. Carol Johnson, Superintendent of Schools. I'd like to congratulate, first, the special recognition to the honorable-mentioned students Casey Hera, Sarah, and I apologize if I don't pronounce names correctly, Puvilas, Colleen Good, Dan Louise, Stephen Valenti, Mark Kyra, Christina Chang, Lauren Fitch, Thomas Sarami, Curtis O'Brien, Lauren Mulligan, Alex Delano, Angelo Wallani, Eric Alitaro, Colleen Brothers, J.T. Lynch, Chris Newton, for their contributions. And special recognition to all of the middle school teachers who participated, especially Stacy Bonnwhite, who was the teacher of the student who got the second place honor and won a $200 grant for her classroom. And it is now my pleasure to invite the second-place winner to come up and read her composition, Michaela Finn.
What should be the main concern of President Obama in his first year in office, and why? It's time to get the troops out of Iraq. To measure the cost of war, one could look at the dollar amount. According to OnTheIssues.org, the war in Iraq is costing Americans more than $10 billion a month. With the current recession and the unemployment rate at an all-time high, government needs to explore a better use of the funds being used to create a democratic Iraq. Iraq has a surplus of funds totaling $59 billion, according to the Associated Press. And one cannot just measure the cost of war in terms of dollars and cents. The cost of American lives needs to be considered. According to iCasualties.org, the death toll of Americans in Iraq stands at 4,238. These lives cannot be measured in dollars. Families are losing vital caretakers, sons, daughters, fathers, and mothers. Americans are losing educated military personnel as well as civilians. These young people were to be the future of America. As military personnel are deployed, families are left to struggle with fear, loss, and oftentimes, financial burdens. Our economy is suffering enough without the continuous stress of the war in Iraq. The money being spent on the war could be better spent on Americans in America. If the money were not being spent on the war in Iraq, President Obama could encourage Congress to spend it on the American people. Providing tax relief during this recession is only one area that has been explored. With the talk of the stimulus package and where cuts should be made, it would be advantageous for government to invest in its own people. Americans need to unite and work for the common good of this country. The war is simply costing Americans too much money and needs to end. Iraq needs to be able to sustain itself. Americans have been in Iraq for too many years. We have trained in their military, guided their judicial system, and fought for the good of their country. It's now time for President Obama to have the resources being spent in Iraq and the personnel used to fight this war brought to a halt. Allow the Iraq people to take control of their country, to preserve American lives and turn America around. The money that Americans are spending in taxes can be used in our own country while money in Iraq can be used for its people. President Obama needs to get the troops out of Iraq and home on American soil. Allow Americans to work in America and save the cost of human lives, and well as the $10 billion a month being spent on this war.
What are you going to do with that? Put that towards college?
Yes.
This is all a little thank you from all of us for the work that you did. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Michaela.
And I'd like to point out her mom and her grandparents that are also here this evening, they should take just as much credit as her teacher does behind them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate your coming, and your reward is you don't have to remain for the rest of the meeting. That's totally up to you. Thank you. Not only that, I would like to say, as a former teacher of English, I think the essay, of course, was excellent, but also that you're able to read it. She read it in front of such a group at Faneuil Hall with that expression, and it needs to end now, and you did that again tonight, Michaela, and that's, being able to do public speaking is an incredible thing. So, good luck on keeping up with your public speaking, too. Really nice job.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, under the superintendent's report, I'd like to announce the appointment of Jason Fredette as the next assistant principal at Shawshin Elementary School. As you know, Jason was head teacher at the Wildwood School, and I believe that he is going to be a wonderful addition to the Shawshin School. Mr. Appaloni put together a committee of parents and teachers, and I think they did a terrific job, so congratulations to Jason. You have in your packet an evacuation plan that Dr. McGinn and Mr. Appaloni co-chaired a committee on, and in the report you notice that we will be trying out an evacuation drill this spring. I'd like to invite Mr. Appaloni out with, on with Dr. McGinn, if you have any questions.
Good evening, Appaloni.
Do you want to?
Yeah, I certainly don't need to go over what you have in your packet. You've seen some of this before, particularly the flyer, the cover letter to the parents. Mr. Appaloni and his counterpart, Mr. Arsenault, have spent an awful lot of time with the logistics of how we're going to do this. It's been a great experience for me, and I believe I speak for the principal, serving on that integrated team with fire, police, transportation, buildings. And as is typically the case, I think, you know, you set off to work on a project, and in fact, there are secondary benefits. You know, our boundaries have expanded considerably in terms of other issues of safety for the schoolchildren of Wilmington, and as Bob likes to say, you know, boy, we turn over one page and there's two or three more things that we really should attend to. So, it's been a great experience, and we're going to look to learn an awful lot on May 5 and May 19, and certainly if you're available and like to watch as we disembark from the evacuating schools, we'd certainly love to have you there. So, we are available for questions.
Do we have any questions from the committee?
I did get a question from a school committee member today, which was a great question. Mr. Connelly asked, what about the school committee? Just, you should all know that you are on the Connect Ed list for emergency contacts, so anytime that there was, there's three separate groups, you would be contacted through that system before it went out in public. So you are on the list. Thank you for asking the question.
I just had a question. I could have missed it, but do we, can you explain to me how you prepare the children or don't prepare the children, and what you're going to do for, because some of them are young.
And that was a great consideration, considering that we're starting at both the primary schools, that we want to be very cognizant of their age. What we're currently doing, because Mr. Arsenault and I have spoken to our staff members and presented them with all the materials and the plans that we have right now, and of course, we're tweaking as we go along the way. What's going to be happening is that before the actual drill, and I want to exercise that this is a drill, so it's not going to be anything that's unknown to the students. Similar as we do the lockdown drills on a regular basis throughout the year, I typically get on the intercom, I make an announcement to the children that we're going to do this, I reassure them again that this is just a practice, like a safety drill, like we do a fire drill. So we're going to do a similar thing to that. In addition, we're going to be putting together a letter that we'll be sending home to parents, announcing to them when we're going to be doing this, and then we're going to remind again by doing a Connect Ed message the night before. So, again, because all of a sudden you can figure someone might panic and think it's a real thing, so we want to make sure that they know this is a drill only, and we moved away from calling it a mock situation to a drill. So that's why we wanted to be very clear with that as well, too. So what's going to be happening the next couple of weeks, because mine is coming up the first week of May, is that we are going to be doing some dry runs of the drill with the students. Mr. Sanderson has been helping quite a bit out with our plans at the Shawshin, and we put together a script that the teachers are going to be reading to the students next week to explain the whole process to them, so that way we're giving the students all the same information. After that script is read next week, then we're going to go through our first dry run. We've set it up so that the students will all be in their classrooms when we do this practice, so that way we could take advantage of all the support staff, specialists, special education staff, reading staff, and we've assigned them particular roles. We've worked very closely, in addition to with the safety, I mean, the transportation coordinator, Susan Hardeman, and the transportation company, it really has been an incredible collaborative effort. And there, we're all going to be working on this together, so that we are, when we practice with the kids, they're going to know exactly where they're going. We've assigned some staff to be bus monitors, we have some that are security, checkers for checking the school once the drill is done. Everyone has a certain job. We even got some staff going to be traffic control people, too, in addition to our safety officer. And so they'll be all set up in their post when we do our drill, so that we're, again, running through this a couple of times, so when we actually do the drill, it's not, that's going to be something new to the children, it's going to be something that they've experienced before. And as you said, Mrs. Kane, just to practice, because we don't want to cause undue angst for these children, but at the same time, too, we want to get the message across that, like all other safety drills, this is something we need to do, and something we need to practice so that we can always be ready.
Thank you, Mr. Appaloni. I just thought of something. Are all parents, not just Shawshin and Wilmington, going to know this is happening? I must, I missed that. I just had that fear of somebody driving by as it happens, and so everybody will know, even though it's not affecting us. Thank you.
I also think I'd, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Duffy.
Actually, my question is in the same lane as Suzie's, and that is, you know, will there be something in the local paper, because it's not just the ones of parents, it's the people who don't have kids in the system, who are on their way to work and go, oh, my Lord, something's happening, you know, so that kind of information.
Yes, Mrs. Benton.
I will do a Connect Ed out to the community outreach, to everyone, explaining what's going to be taking place over the next couple of weeks. And then, the day before, that evening, the individual schools will do one, just talking about this school. Yeah, absolutely.
I think also it says something about our relationship with our vendors, because I really do think North Reading Transportation should be congratulated and recognized for the fact that they're giving us eight buses and a van for one school, nine buses and a van for another, without extra costs to the community. I think that's really excellent, too. Obviously, there's a lot of hard work has gone into this, so thank you very much. We'll look forward to hearing the report of how things went.
Just finally, again, in the same vein as your question, Mrs. Kane, we also want to make sure that once we complete the drill, to just do a simple debriefing with the students. How did it go? How'd you feel? Did you feel unsafe at any time? We'll do the same things with the staff. We'll bring that information back to the planning team, and then eventually to the leadership team, so that they can hear about our experience. So, and the other, the other piece, as you said something, or as the superintendent said something, made me think of, oh, the other thing that North Reading has decided as a result of sitting and doing the planning was that they're going to conduct a separate little exercise of their own to, one day, make a call to their drivers at 10 o'clock in the morning, and ask them, how far are you away from your bus? Just to see what the response time would be to actually get them wherever they are to their bus and then to the school. So again, another little piece that, we won't get information on that day, but has come about as a result of our discussion and work with those people, so.
Excellent, that's great. Thank you, we all said. Thank you.
This is the beginning stages. We've got a lot more, as I said. We began with thinking in one year we're going to be able to accomplish this task, and as we're in year two, and as I said, as the layers start unfolding, we're in this for the long haul, and I think it's a good effort to keep going with.
Great, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Next on is, the last school committee meeting, Mrs. Duffy had requested a cost analysis of the advertising budget with us moving forward with utilizing school springs, and as you can see from the analysis, and I'm glad we can say it again to the public, we will be seeing an annual savings of approximately $12,000 by converting to school springs.
Okay. Questions? Thank you, Mrs. Benton.
Next in your packet is the No Child Left Behind Report Cards. As you know, in accordance with this federal law, all districts must prepare and disseminate in report cards containing the data for the district. That includes teacher quality, student demographics, student academic performance, accountability, and other key indicators, and these are now up on the website, and I'm pleased to say that we did make adequate yearly progress at all the school levels, and congratulate the staff and students, and we'll continue to move forward. But as for the public, this is all on our website as well.
Excellent. There you have it. Thank you. There's a lot of information in this report. It's really broken down in an interesting way, so it'll be worth looking on the website for it.
I have two additional pieces, because this is cut off the press, and I'd like you to know that we have finally, I've been waiting to hear back from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and they have contacted us and will be visiting us April 13th to do a walkthrough and perform what they call a senior study on Wilmington High School, which we have designated as a priority school. Conducting a senior study is part of the Mass School Board Authority's newly reformed school renovation and construction grant program, and part of their due diligence, they will come out, meet with us to look at enrollments, to talk about what our visions are for the school system, and then we'll do a tour of the school, and they are hoping to get all of these done by the end of April, and then we'll be coming out with a list of recommended programs. So this is our time to show them what we believe our needs are, and then they're the ones who will tell us whether we're going to be accepted into the grant program. So I thought you should know that right away. And lastly, just wanted to keep you informed about the stimulus plan and the stabilization funds. We've heard a lot in the news about funds that hopefully will be coming to Wilmington, and one of the three buckets of funding was part of the stabilization fund, where there were 163 communities that had been identified, identified as needing extra funds to meet foundation budget, and Wilmington is one of them that's on the list, and if we were, if that, the governor's proposal is that those communities be made whole, and in his budget, we would get those additional funds. I have been meeting and actually met with Bruce Tarr last week to talk about, because this all has to be approved by the House of Representatives and the senators, and he told me that there will probably be some changes to the budget through the House and through the Senate, so we cannot count on any of these funds yet. But I've been working with our state reps and state senators to get the most, I don't know, the newest information, because every day we keep on getting more information about it, and also I'm sharing it with the town managers, and once we do know what funds we will be receiving, we will, I will bring that report back to you. But that was a little surprise, because we were hoping, as you know, these funds are only a two-year gift, it's not, and they're to be used, there are certain restrictions placed on them that include having to do with certain parts of the budget, they're not to be funds that, for recurring costs. But for example, what I would recommend to you for things like textbook accounts and technology and building capacity, so I'll keep you abreast, changes.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Benton. Now, old business, our only item under old business is our summer sports camp. Mrs. Benton.
You have in your packets a report from me regarding a proposal to run summer sports camps/clinics out of the Wilmington Public Schools with some more information that was requested as of the last meeting. It is our hope that we would be able to run these summer camps through the athletic department and bring in some revenue to the athletic budget, which, as you know, has not been funded to, at its, fully funded for 10 years now, and we always start out with a deficit with the revolving account to pay, to raise the funds to meet the needs, so we'd like to try and start doing that ourselves. Mr. Regerio and I would be happy to entertain any questions.
We've had quite a few questions, and I think you've received, you've received a lot of information on the sports camp. Does anyone have any questions tonight?
Mrs. Duffy.
Just a comment, I wanted to thank Superintendent Benton and Mr. Regerio for the response to all the questions, and I think that's, it's a really good start. I know we're, you know, looking at starting the program this summer, and I think that there were questions that needed to be asked because it came to us so suddenly, and I, you know, was pleased to see that some of the numbers were able to go down at the initial draft or proposal, that we were able to look into that and make some more reasonable numbers, and some of the other questions that were answered, and look forward to some good work on this, on these camps. Thank you.
Appreciate it, and as we have said in the past, we're going to need, I mean, as we go, we're going to learn from it, and we're hoping to come back to you in August with a report of the successful camps, if you approve it this evening, and of some revenue being brought in.
Mrs. Connelly.
I don't have any additional questions. I had submitted several questions to the superintendent, and all of them were answered. Based on the information that I've received and reviewing the policies, and just the overall revenue operating expenses, and just the overall goal of the summer camp, I would like to put a motion on the floor that we approve the summer camp proposal as presented at this time.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Higgins? Any discussion, further discussion? Okay, Mr. Higgins.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, the, all the information that we did get on it was fantastic, there was a lot of background. I did put a lot of time into looking into all of the questions that we had, and just to make sure that I fully understood what everyone's concerns were with it, and with what my concerns were with it, too, and, you know, again, the answers, the responses were phenomenal. It looks like a great plan. Hopefully, we can have a successful summer this year if it goes through, and we can learn a lot from it as well, and, and continue to build on it and grow.
Great, thank you. Okay, all those in favor of the motion as presented? Unanimous, Trish?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now our work begins, Mr. Regerio.
Good luck.
Okay, new business. Oh, people will be glad to see this, the last day of school, Mrs. Benton.
I'm a little nervous about recommending this after hearing that there were snow showers out in Chick-Chickpee today, but I'm recommending that barring any unforeseen snowstorms, that you vote the last day of school as June 15th. This is the first notice, so hopefully at the April 28th, 29th, sorry, meeting, you'll be able to vote that. Along with that are proposed school calendars, and I apologize because the one in your packet...
This is just a, don't shoot me. Why is the last day a half-day for students? I think that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to recommend that, yeah.
That's different.
Yes, that is different. I am recommending, thank you, I am recommending a change, that it be a half-day for students and a full day for staff. As you know, there are a lot of capital improvement plans, projects that are being planned for the schools, and we need to empty out classrooms, and I, and it makes the most sense to me to give the classroom teachers time to do that. Besides, if you interviewed any of the students, I walked around last year on the last day of school, right before schools, and believe me, every student said to me, why are we here a full day? And we meet the number of hours, so I'm glad, thank you for bringing that up.
That's a good idea.
So that's my recommendation.
Thank you. That's probably one of the most important pieces of information people want to know. Good for noticing that, thank you, Mrs. Shaw. I just accepted it was always that way in Medford, so when I saw it, I was like, oh, yeah, it's always that way. Yeah. Great, thank you. And the school calendars, we wrote?
You have, before you were at your table, proposed a school calendar for 2009, 2010, and one for 2010, 2011. And again, we will bring this back on April 29th for your approval, and as you look at the 2010, 2011 calendar, you will note that it looks like there's not, that Good Friday isn't, Good Friday is during vacation that year.
Oh.
It falls on the 22nd of August, of April, excuse me, of April. So I'll be looking for approval at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and our next item of business is the superintendent's evaluation. This year, the superintendent and the school committee agreed to a major change in the form of the evaluation, so that rather than base the evaluation on generalizations, it was decided that the superintendent's goals for 2000 was decided that the superintendent's goals for 2008, 2009 would comprise the basis of the evaluation. The beginning of the school year, the school committee approves the superintendent's goals. For the evaluation, the school committee has an agreed-upon set of subcategories for each goal that were either not achieved and therefore need improvement, were achieved and meet school committee expectations, or were achieved in such a way as to exceed school committee expectations. Each of the categories was assigned points, needs improvement, one point, meets expectations, two points, and exceeds expectations, three points, with a total of 18 possible. Six of the seven school committee members participated in the evaluation process. I am pleased to announce the following results. Area one leadership, 17. The focus is on student learning, promoting continuous improvement of student learning, and the teaching and curriculum effectiveness that supports that improvement. Curriculum, instructional methods, assessment strategies, professional development opportunities are among the categories assessed. Joanne is clearly a leader in promoting teacher education and student-centered learning. Area two, communication and community relations, 16.5. The focus is leadership and planning. Provide strong and effective educational leadership within the school system and town, communicate a clear vision for the future of the Wilmington Public Schools. The five-year strategic plan, notes from the White Board, and our new expanded website under a new webmaster are among the categories assessed. It is suggested that the superintendent could do a quarterly article showcase achievements in the town crier. Also, communication during contract negotiations was of concern and needs to be reviewed. Mrs. Benton has a clear vision for the improvement of the Wilmington Public Schools. Fiscal management, 14.5. The focus is on finance and budget, maintain financial stability, and enhance the effective and efficient use of limited-use resources. Among the items that Mrs. Benton has spearheaded are working toward greater cost efficiencies, especially in energy conservation, and containing utility costs, collective bargaining with the future well-being of the school district and its employees in mind, development of FY-10 budget, and continued exploration of grants. By keeping the teacher-student relationship as the key element of a Wilmington education, and with the effective use of her leadership team and a close relationship with the town manager, the superintendent has made effective and efficient use of limited resources. It is suggested that another source of fiscal interaction could be working more closely with the state legislative team. However, tonight, we found out that she is in fact doing that, so we're also, we're, I wanted to note that. Area four, general management, 14.5. The focus is facilities and space utilization. Provide adequate facilities for long-term enrollment and programmatic needs of the school system. This category covers two ongoing products, projects. The system is working with the Mass School Building Authority to evaluate the need for renovation of the new high school. The state agency involved in this is one year behind on their end, so we should have had this letter about a year ago, but tonight was the perfect night for that letter to come. Secondly, the superintendent is working with the town public building department to develop a comprehensive strategic plan to ensure our building support the educational program. And area five, relationship with school committee, 16. Delivers, the superintendent delivers clear information in a timely manner, keeps school committee informed of items within the school committee's purview. Joanne is passionate about education, but what sets her aside is her compassion for all staff. She answers school committee questions immediately. The superintendent forms the chair of all major news, many items of which are courtesy. Superintendent Benton has a true open-door policy. She encourages questions on each agenda and anything in between, and she is consistently and totally forthcoming with the information requested. Mrs. Benton, the school committee is thankful to have you providing the necessary skills in leadership as superintendent of the Wilmington School District, especially during turbulent economic times. Working with you is truly an invigorating experience. You are doing an excellent job in leading our system toward future greatness. Glad to have you, thank you. Okay. Delegations. Okay. No delegations? Oh. Mr. Vanberg? Yes?
Hi. I'm Chairperson. Hello, to you.
Mr. Vanberg?
Mr. Grant? Yes?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm Chairperson Superintendent Benton. School committee members, thanks for some time. It was brought to our attention last week that the high school administration has elected not to renew the assistant...
I have to stop you right there. I'm really sorry. I wish that one of you had let me know that you were coming with that intention tonight, because as a school committee, we have no say in this. We have no, no role in the decision-making process. We work under the law and under the, under the state law, Mass Law, Chapter 71, Section 59B for employment of principals. It states that principals employed under this section shall be responsible, consistent with district personnel policies and budgetary restrictions, and subject to the approval of the superintendent for hiring all teachers, athletic coaches, instructional or administrative aides, and other personnel subject to review and prior approval by the superintendent and subject to the provisions of this chapter. I did speak to our lawyer about this situation. Contracts with coaches are one-year contracts. They do not fall under any kind of protective cap. They have no tenure, they have no just cause protection. The school committee cannot overturn either the superintendent or the principal, in the case of a coach. It's not in our purview. The school committee should not know about the intricacies of the principal's decision. They are subject to review by the superintendent, and I'm unable to allow a discussion on this issue at our school committee meeting. So while I appreciate that you took the time to come here, I'm not able to let us continue on a discussion. And I would like to know, I figure I might as well take this time as, as kind of an educational opportunity. Delegations on school committee meetings are, of course, people get to talk, but if you want to be on the agenda, you would let the superintendent of schools know, and then the superintendent and whoever would be the chair at the time make a decision as to whether that's pertinent for a school committee agenda. And secondly, the delegations part of the meeting is so that you could discuss anything that came up during the meeting. So the delegations are supposed to be particular to whatever we discussed tonight at the meeting, and in addition, this was not discussed, and we're not allowed to discuss it. So I'm sorry...
May I, Chairperson?
Yes, sir.
May I make one comment, please?
If it has nothing to do with the actual content of why you're here.
No, my name is Jerry Dijon. I'm at 32 Salem Street in Wilmington, and I would just like to know why we cannot ask the school committee a question relative to the teachers and coaches in this town.
You could ask a question, that's a general question, but you cannot ask a personnel issue. It's actually for the protection of the employees rather than for us. We do not, we have not got the ability to do one thing about a personnel, a personnel issue, and in fact, people may think we know everything that's going on with personnel. We do not, we do not have the right to know that. We don't know any more than you do about this situation is between the coach, the principal, and the superintendent. Other than that, that's not, it's not in our purview. We are just ordinary citizens when it comes to that.
Ma'am, Chairperson, if I may, we're not here this evening asking you to take any action. We are here as parents of students in the school system, as residents, and as voters of this elected body, simply ask, asking for the opportunity to inform the board that in the course of seven days, 464 students, parents, and alumni have signed a petition that has been presented to school, school administration. We're not asking for any action. I have a copy of the statute you just read.
I can take that, Mr. Grant, but I can't, beyond that, there's nothing I can do. I've been, I've been advised by our legal counsel, we cannot get into a discussion about it, we can, we, we shouldn't, that I'm not to allow a discussion to go on about this.
Could you tell us what vehicle we could utilize?
The only vehicle...
To express our opinions?
I'm sorry, ma'am, the only vehicle you have is the principal of the high school. It is his decision.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Sorry.
Can we comment about the principal of the high school?
No, absolutely not. I'm sorry.
I'm sure you wouldn't want to hear it, anyway.
Sir, that's really inappropriate. Mrs. Scamler?
I thought you just said that it was the principal of the high school with the approval of the superintendent, and since the superintendent is here, could we ask her a question?
Not at this meeting, not during this meeting. If you'd like to contact the superintendent, otherwise...
Where can we make these requests, and where can we get these answers?
You could call the Roman House.
The coach himself doesn't have the reason. Doesn't that seem ridiculous?
Mrs. Scamler, I know, we can't, that's one side of the issue. We don't know that. We know that you think that, but we don't know that, and we can't get into this back and forth of who knows?
We would like to know that, as Mr. Garrett said.
I can't, I'm going to have to stop this.
We're all, we're all members, and we all voted for this, for the school committee. We need an answer.
Mrs. Scamler, you know that, I, you know that if we could talk about it, we would, and we all probably have maybe the same, maybe different feelings here. We all have feelings about this, I'm sure. But we are bound by the law, and there's nothing, I have been told very definitively by our lawyer, not to allow any kind of discussion on this issue. And so I am not going to do that. I can't, I can't do that, and I hope that you would respect that that's what we have to do in this particular situation. Yes, sir?
My name is Michael Cabral, I attend Seneca Lane. We respect the school committee's opinion. The superintendent is sitting right there, is that correct?
During a meeting, Mr. Cabral, I can't have any discussion during the school committee meeting about this.
The superintendent, okay, can we please set up a meeting where we can be heard with the superintendent and the principal, okay? We'll disregard the school committee meeting right now, but she's right there. We'd like to have a meeting with the superintendent, if we may please, to discuss this with the superintendent. It's not, it's not addressed to you, Madam Chairman, Chairperson. It's to the superintendent. She's spoken all night, she has a microphone, I'd like to know if we could please get an answer, trying to set something up with her to address this issue, which is very, very important to all of us.
I know, outside of this meeting, you can do that. So you could wait until our meeting's finished, or you could call the Roman House, which I feel would probably be a better way, because she doesn't have her schedule with her tonight, I doubt. You could call the Roman House and set up a meeting.
All right, thank you.
Definitely. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to sit down. I can't, we can't go further. Board members, questions and comments? Mrs. Cushing, this is like deja vu, and I'm sorry, Mrs. Cushing, Mrs. Peterson, no present tonight.
This is my last meeting, I promise. I actually have, I'm taking it down to a whole nother level here. I went to the girls Wilmington tennis meet tonight, the last afternoon. My niece actually coaches Hamilton Wenham, and they were playing Wilmington, and Mrs. Duffy was there, but we noticed that it's, they play at the Bartwell Courts today, I mean, this year, and I don't need an answer tonight, they're using, this is bizarre, they're using a porta potty at the Bartwell. They rented a porta potty for the season, and they're girls. And my question to, and I won't be here, is why can't they either use Bartwell, West, Shoshe, I'm not Shoshe, in the middle school? It just seems like a crazy expense, and it's just, the girls are commenting on it. Mrs. Duffy and I picked up on it, and it's, I don't know how expensive it is, but it would seem to me with three schools there that, especially for girls, would be much better.
What time is the tennis?
It's after 3:30.
That's right, there's buildings a lot. I'll look into it, I'll be glad to look into it.
The Bartwell's open for the CARES program until 6 o'clock. I mean, that's kind of the thing, the, the tennis courts here, the Bartwell is there, there aren't a lot of girls that go, you know, they try and do it before a match, before the bus sends them over there, and they're generally there till, and they are there past when the Bartwell closes at 6, because their matches tend to go right till it gets dark to 7 o'clock. But it just seemed to be...
You know, bizarre, it was just, it makes sense.
It could be something, you know, between CARES and people entering and exiting the building, but it's a little, you know, to us, when you're right there, and a girl has to go to the bathroom in the middle of, between one set and the next, and she's got to run, you know, either use the porta potty, you know.
There's probably, I mean, there's an expense to that, because it has to sit there the whole time. And I know that's like a bad thing for me to go along, but...
Please research the porta potty for us.
Yeah, you know, that's the last thing I'm going to ask. And also, having said that, now I can officially say goodbye to Mrs. Peterson, even though I know I'll see you outside of here, but thank you for your three years, and I'll see you a lot of other places. Thank you.
Mrs. Duffy?
The porta potty. I'll keep an eye on her porta potty stuff. No, I, I wanted to say thank you for the work that's being done with the evacuation plan. Like Mr. Appoloni said, you start something and you think, wow, you know, only these 10 questions have to be answered, and then, like peeling, you know, layer after layer, you find that one question leads to another question, leads to then the police department, the fire department, and you think you had everybody in the mix to talk to, and then there was another question that comes up. And I think that, my point in bringing this is that I think that you did a very nice job, the committee, in planning far enough ahead to take a look at all those questions, coming up with some solutions ahead of time, like you said, one year turned into two before you're ready to even take a look at a practice run, and even that has a lot of questions, and more will come once the drill, you know, is done. But I, you know, I really appreciate that type of planning, I really appreciate that type of commitment from, you know, the, the community. I mean, when you're talking about collaboration between the fire department, police department, and the collaboration to let the community know what's going on, so nobody's, you know, wondering what's happening that day. I think that is, is a lot of credit, and I know it's not going to go off without a hitch, but I have a good idea from all that's been out here and what's been said, and, you know, what I have in my packet, to know what to expect and what questions I can look for after that. So I think that a really big applause needs to go before it even gets started, that that's a lot of good planning and preparation. And I think that, that's the biggest thing for me from, from the meeting this evening, and I appreciate that. And that's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Duffy. Mr. Higgins?
Not, not much, just good luck, Bob, and I look forward to seeing that report after, after the exciting days that you have. That's about it. Yeah, I look forward to seeing that report, though.
Ms. O'Callaghan?
I don't have anything specific, other than to say thank you very much to Mrs. Peterson for your three years of service, and for me, I'm very grateful for the friendship that I have gained through this experience, and I'm hoping that we will stay in touch as you leave and I remain, and that we will still continue our friendship outside of the committee. So thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Peterson? Made me well up. I just want to say, it's amazing how quickly three years has gone by. I remember sitting at the town hall with Mrs. Cushing, waiting for the votes to be tallied, granted, no one was running against us, but we were there anyway. And just to think of three years being ahead and serving on a committee, and I must say, it has been a wonderful group of people to serve with, very professional, very helpful, different opinions, but we've all seemed to have worked pretty well together. And Wilmington should be very proud that you're in their hands as they continue on. I also want to say thank you to Mr. Appoloni for a great evacuation plan. I like to hear that you're going to tailor the explanation to the younger children, knowing that my children are in that school system. It puts me at ease, thinking my children will not be nervous. And I, I think that shows what a great staff we have here in Wilmington, from Joanne Benton right down to literally the custodians, who are always there to help, to always open up, and to always help out, and I know you guys will be in great hands, and I appreciate my three years here. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Quick?
I'm always the last one. Everybody always says everything by the time it gets to me. Just, I wanted to thank Mrs. Peterson very much, you know, for my first day, it's been a year, and she's been there to help me anytime I have a question, and it's been a great help. Thank you so much for all your help, and I'm going to miss having you sitting next to me. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to, before I say my goodbyes, two things. One is the Educational Foundation Vendors Evening was absolutely outstanding. You could tell that it's going to gain momentum. It's really gained momentum from last year, and it was so much fun, and to see Ms. Cushing, Dr. Quick, Mrs. Peterson, they were both, you were both actually working, working at it, and Mrs. Benton came over with her junior prom gown on. I, I didn't put in for that one. There were so many wonderful things that, that could be found. I'm going to be curious to see how, how we made out on it. I think it must have been even more so than last year, but so much work, and such a community effort. It was just fabulous, and you did a great job. So, I want to thank you, the members of the committee and the Educational Foundation Group that does it, it was wonderful. And the other thing is that the League of Women Voters is having a candidate tonight, April 16th, even though people are not running, they're running unopposed. I, I just wanted to mention it because I think it is an extremely clever way that they're doing it, and they've asked myself and Selectmen New House to come to it, and we're just going to give a very brief, three-minute overview of what the role of school committee is, and what the three major things we'll be working on in, in the next 18 months. And then, the candidates are going to have, they're going to have opportunity for about approximately four questions they'll be answering. But it's really an educational, it's, the way it's being set up is really to educate the public as to what the roles are, and what the Board of Selectmen does for the town, and what the school committee does for the town. So, I just wanted to mention, it's April 16th, it'll be on WCTV from now until the election, I'm sure, so people want to, to look at that. And I, I just want to say for both Suzie and Kim, it has been a real, an excellent experience, when you don't know people and you start to work with them, or you, you know them slightly, or, you know, you knew them in the past, Suzie and I used to hold signs together years ago. And then, just like, like Kim said, to, to start to relate to a group of people about issues, that we all come, we come from our own point of view. And I want to say thank you as the chair for the help, for the information that you shared with me, and for not being afraid to say to me, you're not doing that right, we should do it, you know. I just, I want to say that you've given such a service to the town. I hope the town realizes, and I think they do, that we've gone a long way in the last three years, and certainly, you've been a big part of that, and I want to thank you both for your service also. And, okay, and I get to say to Mrs. Peterson, correspondence?
Not tonight.
We should say the end, the end, right there. Thank you. Our future meeting dates, we'll be meeting after town election, which is, please don't forget to vote, even though it's uncontested, people like to see that they got votes. It's April 29th will be our next meeting, town election April 25th, and our next meeting will be April 29th. And that's it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, maybe Mrs. Cushing and Mrs. Peterson could be the motions.
You can do it this time, I did it last week ago.
Mrs. Peterson?
Motion to adjourn?
Do we have a second? Mrs. Cushing, second. All those in favor? Good night, everybody. Thank you so much.